Good evening. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for December 21st, 2015. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for this time of year. We thank you for sending your son. Dear Lord, and Father, we pray that you would watch over those who keep us safe during this time of year for our law enforcement, our EMS, as they work the holiday. Lord, we pray for those who are overseas and have to be away from home, and we pray for them and their families during this time of year. Father, we thank you for all the good that you've done for this past year. Father, give us wisdom as we make decisions for the county that we can make the very best decisions we can. For you are the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Thank you. The first item of business today is a public hearing concerning the approval of the execution and delivery of the installment financing contract in a principal amount not to exceed $2,100,000 and the county's construction of the emergency services base. At this point, we'll open the public hearing, and I'll call on Julie Davis, our finance director, and Greg Schuping, our emergency management director.
Okay, and I think our EMS director is here, too. So I think we've got the whole crowd here to start this. You'll remember that last meeting, you passed a resolution that authorized the finance director to start the process for the loan for the EMS base. And the process here, once we have this public hearing, is the, I'll be sending an application into the local government commission in January for them to approve at their February meeting for a mid-February closing of the loan for, we hope, not more than $2.1 million. Actually, that is a not-to-exceed amount, so we're not going to be able to go over the $2.1 million. And we put a notice of public hearing in the newspaper. It appeared on December 11th. So we're here for the public hearing, and it's because of the loan, but it's also because of the project. And Greg's going to give you a little bit of information or give the audience a little information about the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you for your support this year with emergency management in general. I know there's been a lot of projects that are going on, both in the county specifically, but also through the community college and other projects that you guys are intimately familiar with. In many ways, your support has translated into improved emergency services for the citizens and patrons of Haywood County. I'd like to thank the Commissioners, also Mr. Dove and Dale Burris and others, for their commitment to the planning phase of this particular building project, as well as the sheriff's office revision with the 901 Communication Center. And what this really is doing for us is putting this into a public safety complex, if you will. Everything's really going to be located on one footprint there. Because of your vision, I believe that we'll be able to better operate as a team unlike no other time in the history of Haywood County. In the world we live in today, collaboration and also unity is imperative for us. I know why I don't have to say that. For emergency management, this will be the first building that has been completely planned and specifically built with emergency management, as well as EMS in mind. I know Jim Presley is here as well. Us and several other agencies or members of the team have collaborated to make sure the building plans will accommodate everything that we need for years to come. So as we move forward, we pledge to continue to implement ways to improve our services to the citizens and the patrons of this beautiful county. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, is there anyone present who would care to comment on this matter? I know it's been very well-vetted over the past several months, actually, last couple of years, so I think it's a very good project and something the county can be proud of. So again, anyone present who would care to comment? Okay. Any comments from our board members or questions? I know we're all very familiar with it as well. No? Okay. Then, hearing no additional comments, I'll close the public hearing, and this will be placed, I suppose, on the next agenda. Okay. All right. Then we'll move to the public comment session. No one has signed up, but is there, again, anyone present who would care to address the board? Okay, we'll move to constituent concerns. Michael?
Just want to make a few comments about the time of the year and the, thank everyone who has put any efforts into making sure that there's lots of gifts and lots of clothing and lots of food for our unfortunate people out there, because there's a lot of effort by a lot of people, a lot of civic clubs and everything, and they, you know, need to be commended for the job they do.
I just, I'll just ditto what Michael said.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Ditto what has been said earlier. To me, this, every day is an important day, but especially this time of year, we have a lot of people that are in need. And if you really want to feel good about yourself, go help somebody that's really, really in need. I know the Rotary Clubs tomorrow will be taking Christmas baskets throughout the Kent County to needy people. There's always volunteers needed to ring the bell at Kmart, Ingles. So, again, if you want to feel good about Christmas and about this season, do something for somebody else.
Well said, Bill. Well said. Okay. Then we'll move next to administrative and agency reports. We have Lynn Collins from the Haywood County Tourism Development Authority with us for a year-end and first-quarter occupancy tax report. Lynn, welcome.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to talk to you about our year-end report and also just give you an update on where we stand with regard to the first quarter for tourism here in Haywood County. You have in your packets the year-end report for the 3%, and if you will see, the 2014-15 actual against projections, you will see that we exceeded our projections, and this was based on a 3% increase over the previous year, and you have the 13-14 figure on here also. We were very pleased with that, and then when you add the 1% money to that, which was about $265,000, we went over $1 million in collections for the occupancy tax here in Haywood County, and that was the first year we've ever gone over $1 million in occupancy tax collection. So we were thrilled about that. And as you can see here, this is the 1% year-end report. So you will see that Canton collects about 8% of the money, Clyde is 1%, Lake June-Luska is about 4%, Maggie Valley 57%, and Waynesville averages out about 30%. So, as you know, 3% comes directly back to the TDA for the purpose of marketing the county overall, and then this 1% goes back to the zip code area where it's collected, and that is, that money is administered through a funding partnership where people can apply for funding in each of those zip code areas, and then you have the 1% committees who review those applications and make recommendations to the TDA board for the spending of those 1% funds. So we had a very good year last year. The economic impact sheet, this comes from our friend, Dr. Steve Morris, over at Western Carolina University. You all get to see this every year. Talks about how much we generate in tax revenue throughout the year. Over 1,600 jobs here in Haywood County are attributable to tourism. And the most important thing that I always tell you on this screen is the tax relief on Haywood County households. And for this past year, each household will pay $549 less in local and state taxes because of having tourism in Haywood County. So that's a very important reason to have tourism in the area. We move on to the next slide. This is our first-quarter report, and because we had been doing so well, our board got very aggressive this year and decided to do a 6% increase in projections. Historically, they have done a 2% to 3% increase, and as you can see, we are well above projections right now as it stands. However, I'm not sure how long that's going to last if this warm weather keeps up. But the good news is, we've got a little overage to fall back on if we're not able to have lots of snow for our skiers that come to visit. And also, on the first-quarter 1% report, which is on the next slide, you can see how each of the zip codes are doing. And just to give you an idea, on the bottom, in the yellow highlighted area, Canton is 13% ahead of last year, Clyde is 20% ahead of last year, Lake June-Luska is 43% ahead of where they were last year, Maggie Valley 7%, and Waynesville 16%. The large number with Lake June-Luska really is attributable to the tariffs being completed because this time last year, the terrace was closed, so they didn't have that to count in their numbers. So that's why they have such a large number. We're beginning to see the results of that renovation. One of the biggest things that we are doing this year to increase tourism here in Haywood County is we have identified that one of our growth areas was group sales. We have always focused on the leisure travel. We have never focused on bringing groups into the area. So we started a group sales initiative this year and hired a group sales person that came on board in August, and we are already having good success in that area and look forward to bringing lots more tourists in, whether it's on motorcoaches or whether it's family reunions or different types of reunions, military reunions. Could be for weddings, it could be for meetings and small conventions, it could be car and motorcycle rallies. Anything that's over 12 people can be considered a group. So our new person is off with a bang on group sales, and we have already had several groups of group leaders here to look at Haywood County. And we had an international group here a couple of weeks ago. We had 10 international tour operators from the UK, Germany, the Netherlands, and Italy, and they were very impressed with the area. They said that Haywood County was the highlight of their tour of Western North Carolina and that we definitely would see business from them. So we're very excited about this new group sales initiative. So I wanted to be brief, but to let you know that tourism is alive and well in Haywood County, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Lynn. I'll call on Commissioner Sorrells. He represents our board on the TDA board. Michael, do you have anything you want to say?
I just want to thank you and thank the board for what they do, and obviously, you know, we're very blessed with having the increases and all, and a lot of that has to do, hopefully, with a lot of the marketing and a lot of the projects and all that you all have taken on in the last year, and they're showing increases in tourism in Haywood County. So I want to really thank you all and the board for what they do.
I received an email today from a member of that board praising the work that Julie Davis does for TDA. And Julie is a very modest person, but she was, they were very effusive in their praise for her and the work that she do, Julie, so thank you for that.
Absolutely. We couldn't do it without her.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Lynn?
Lynn's right. All we need is a little snow, cold weather.
Yes, we desperately could use a little, well, I'll take the cold weather. They can make the snow.
Right.
Yeah, when there's no snow on the ground in Maine, you know that something's up.
I had a gentleman call from Florida on Friday afternoon, and he was asking about the weather, and so I told him, you know, what the forecast was, and he said, "You just don't understand how frustrated I am that you all don't have snow." And I said, "Sir, you're not even more frustrated than I am, believe me." So, but I think hopefully the gas prices will make them still want to come.
Yeah, I think there's still a lot of winter left. It doesn't start until midnight tonight, so.
Yeah.
Well, it seems to me like, when I've paid attention, if it's really cold before Thanksgiving, I mean, before Christmas, it's not too cold after Christmas. But when it's not too cold before Christmas, it's usually real cold after Christmas. So maybe we're about to get into it.
We'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Have a happy holiday.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, is there any adjustment to the agenda today?
One item is on our constituent concerns. I think I was put in there as making a remark about the upbeat and, you know, all the traffic and cars in Asheville, and I think Mr. Upton was the one that made that comment. So I want to be sure he gets credit for it.
Oh, in the minutes?
Yes, in the minutes.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Okay, then we'll move to the consent agenda. In reference to the minutes of December 7th, 2015, we've had the opportunity to review those. Are there any changes other than the one noted by Commissioner Sorrells? Okay. We'll move to the second item, which is refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. David Francis, tax administrator. Welcome, David.
Merry, merry Christmas, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well. Before you, you have the releases and refunds for the month of November. Nothing unusual report, except that it was a little bit smaller than months past, so the tax bills went out, and all those usually diminish as you get further away from the tax bills being held out.
We've had the opportunity to review those as well. Any comments, questions, observations? Okay, thank you. All right, the next item would be the 2015 tax collections update. Our tax collector, Mike Matthews, is listed as the presenter. He doesn't appear to be present. Ira, do you know where he might be?
The information that I received from Mrs. Ezell, the deputy tax collector, she was going to present tonight, and she was ill. Mr. Matthews had a family engagement and did not show for this.
Okay, well, this is important report to our citizenry, especially when one considers that this particular report reflects a $4 million discrepancy or reduction in the amount of taxes collected, and I think that there may be an explanation for that, but we certainly need to have that explanation made. Do you know how that occurred or why it occurred, Ira? Did you get an explanation from Mr. Matthews about that?
Mr. Matthews has not given an explanation, nor did the things that were sent provide an explanation as to why there's a $4 million discrepancy or why it's $4 million slower than last year. He's provided no explanation.
Were you able to do any, make any inquiries?
I ask a few questions, to the best of my knowledge. Normally, you would send the escrows out, and the escrows are the money that everybody who has a mortgage pays in monthly to the different banks and lending institutions. Normally, the banks and the lending institutions receive some kind of notice and work out some kind of coordinated payment with the tax office in November. That was not done. So the, they missed the escrows. Then, this was worked out, and these were paid in December as opposed to November, so hopefully it will all be called up. But he did not send out the escrow notices or the work with the banks on that.
Do you know why they weren't sent out?
I have no reason as to why he didn't get it sent out, other than I really don't know why he missed all that. I understand there were meetings on the processes that he did not appear at, but that's all I know.
I'm sorry?
There were meetings on how to do this and on the processes that he did not appear at, but that's all I know.
Did he attend those meetings?
To my knowledge, no, and I don't know why.
Well, December's a very busy month in the tax office. Isn't it the busiest month of the year?
My knowledge, December is usually our highest collection month. Is that what you'd say, from what you've seen historically?
Yeah, it's very busy.
It's a very busy month.
So that's why everybody down there's working hard.
I would say that his staff is working hard. The tax collector's staff is working hard.
How hard or often is the tax collector working?
I would say from the time that the office is open, he's definitely been there less than 50% of the time this month, and possibly as little as a third. I have to review the tapes, but he's definitely been there less than half the time his office has been open this month.
What do you base that on?
What people have told me and also looking at some of the card accesses and stuff like that. I have looked at a few of the days on the tape, but I haven't looked at all of them. But I've gotten reports from people and talking to people that work down there. And...
Any Commissioners have any observations or questions, Ira? He's still getting paid full-time, eh? Full-time salary?
His salary and benefits have not diminished since he was sworn in.
Regardless of how many hours he does or does not work, he makes the same amount of money?
Correct.
You know, I'm concerned if come June, if we're still in the same shape, then what? I guess the obvious is, an increase in tax rate?
Well...
I mean, if we're not, I mean, if we're not collecting the money, what?
If I understood Ira correctly, this issue with, that occurred this month should correct itself when the escrows are reported. Is that about right, Ira?
When the escrows, my understanding is they're paid in, they were paid in December and not November, and so they will be, it should, the money here that's missing, most of it should come back up and after that.
I seem to recall that this escrow project was started like a year ago with some software or something, and am I correcting that recollection? And then just fell by the wayside?
I don't have knowledge other than what I've said on this.
David Francis here?
I believe he stepped out. Would you like the...
I don't guess it's necessary. I just recall that there was a project started in order to make sure that the stale information was updated between August and like November of each year. I don't know exactly what happened with that.
Didn't the tax bills go out a little lighter than normal this year?
Yes, and I was there when they were, when Mrs. Ezell was working on those late at night, yes.
Why did they go out late?
Don't have a full explanation for that. I know that when, again, I would say that she was working late, but she was, a lot of times, the one working late, doing stuff.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Kirk, or anything?
So we saying this is correctable as we run?
Well, I think so. I think so.
It's, I mean, somebody that may not be doing their job. Sounds what, that's what he sounds like.
I think the staff's working really hard.
I think the staff is definitely working hard, yes.
From what I was saying, I think the staff that we've, you know, that we've got in place, so, but I have heard from the public that they don't see him up there very often. Have gotten a lot of complaints about that, but there's nothing we can do about that.
No, there isn't. We have, Commissioners have, other than the purse strings, we have no legal authority over the tax collector or any other elected official, sheriff, restorative deeds, clerk of court. They are public officials in their own right through their election. Obviously, we have the ability to appropriate or not appropriate funding, but you have to, you have to fund your tax collection efforts, or you wouldn't have any tax collections. So that's something that has to be done, but perhaps after the holidays, you could schedule perhaps a meeting with Mr. Matthews and see if we could reach a better understanding of what the, what our expectations are of that office and what, more importantly, what the taxpayers' expectations are.
Be happy to do so.
Okay. Okay, we'll move then to the fourth item of the consent agenda, which is a budget amendment. Julie?
I have a budget amendment for you. This evening is just one. It's for the emergency management department for $15,330. This is federal money that's flowing through the state Department of Public Safety, and it's for training, for emergency management training in the county.
Okay. Any questions or observations on that budget amendment? Okay. Any questions on the consent agenda? If not, we entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you. We don't have any old business today, so we'll move directly to new business, which is the request of appointments to the Tourism Development Authority Board. Very kind of lengthy, but we'll go through it. The first two items, 20 units or more and 20 units or less, there was one opening on each of those and one applicant. Both applicants have been interviewed, so I would entertain a motion at this point that the appointments of Mr. Shaw and Mr. Lowe to the respective TDA 20 units or more or 20 units or less be made by acclamation.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. All right, next would be tourism-related. We had one vacancy and three interviews, three highly qualified individuals, Mr. Kevin Sandifer, Chris Bates, and Stephen Lloyd. But unfortunately, only one can be appointed, so we will decide that by ballot. Okay, thank you. All right, next we'll move to the two municipal seats on the TDA board. First, from Maggie Valley, is recommending Mike Evelyn, who is eligible to serve another term. And from Canton, the recommendation of their local government is Gail Mull. So again, I would entertain a motion that Mike Evelyn and Gail Mull be appointed by acclamation.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. And lastly, is the 1% zip code subcommittees. And again, these were recommended by the respective municipalities, town of Canton, Clyde, Maggie Valley, and Waynesville. From Canton, Deborah Reed, Tracy O'Neal, and Laura Simmons. Town of Clyde is Sarah Brown, Jewel Beal, and Rhonda Smathers. Maggie Valley is Myra Glover, Caroline Green, Michael Patel, Louis Perone, and Sonya Michaels. And town of Waynesville is John Keith, Katie Eason Hughes, Deb Eisenberg, Mindy Wood, and Julie Cat. If there's no objection, entertain a motion that the zip code subcommittees as presented be approved by acclamation.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That concludes new business. At this point, would entertain a motion that we enter into economic, closed session for purposes of economic development under authority of General Statute 143-318.11A4.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session. I do not expect any action following closed session. We have returned from closed session. Is there any other business for the board? Okay. Before we entertain a motion to... Okay, before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I'd like to take the opportunity to wish all of our citizens a very happy Christmas, Merry Christmas, and a healthy New Year, and wish the best for everyone. Anybody else have any?
I would concur with that. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Been a very productive year, and we will reconvene in January of 2016. At this point, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.